Done. The web, we are now live.
Okay, so we're live, we're recording and no, I'm sorry, I've lost our agenda. Where did that go? There it is. Too many windows. Okay, I would like to call to order the Monday, October 19th, meeting of the Hood River City Planning Commission as we've been doing for quite some time. We are meeting via Zoom pursuant to the governor's and the mayor's emergency declaration. And we're certainly eager to take testimony from the public and we've made arrangements to do that. And we'll talk about that in a minute, but let's get started with our director's update. Dustin, can you give us your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this kind of rolls right into the work plan meeting. Commissioner Irving asked that I provide a little update regarding the housing work that we're doing this year, which was a part of last year's work plan or this year's work plan. And at this time, myself and Sarah Architects, who is our consulting designer and architect, are putting together the draft for your review. So this code is going to include a number of different housing types that are not currently allowed by code or not allowed by right by code. So the intent will bring, will be to bring forward some additional housing types, configurations of duplex, triplex, quads, cluster, clusters and cottages, and have them subject to clear and objective standards, which would be then able to be introduced within the code. So there'll be some specific requirements regarding maximum sizes, height, length, facing the street, number of curb cuts, and some characteristics, clear and objective characteristics that these things will operate under. And that's coming for your review. And somebody's going to have to repeat that to Bill because he asked for the update. So.
Bill is here.
Oh, you're on.
Yeah, Bill is there. Dustin, can you talk a little bit more about the process? So you hired this contractor. Are we the first to get to see the draft? Or does that go to the council? How's that work?
I believe you may be the first to see the draft. So council hasn't seen this level of detail. They just kind of set some parameters on that. So they haven't seen any draft work yet.
What sort of parameters did they set?
It was really more of around the middle housing. They didn't describe whether they wanted, they wanted us to investigate the use of duplexes in R1 zones. They didn't determine that it was acceptable that we do that, but they didn't want to rule it out away. That came as a provision of House Bill 2001, which House Bill 2001 introduced code requirements that all middle, they called the middle cities code. Middle cities would have to allow a lot of this or some of this missile, missing middle housing by right in all zones. That applies to cities 10,000 and over. So we're not an automatic requirement that we would allow duplexes, but based on our circumstances and that we will eventually, we presume we eventually will be 10,000 people.
Is that the city size or the urban growth area size?
City size.
Okay.
So presumably we will take up the urban growth boundary either by annexation or by growth. And in that respect, we, it's not if we will be 10,000 people, it's when. We presume within, you know, under a certain growth rate, maybe within seven years, we will be there. And that's without any large annexations. So they wanted us to investigate that. They wanted us to look at what does a duplex look like in an R1 zone. So that was, that was a big, that was a big ask, or not a big ask, but that was a significant point of discussion because it wasn't necessarily in the housing needs analysis, because it really didn't exist at that time. But it was a way to respond, or at least contemplate, how does House Bill 2001 impact the city of Hood River and middle cities in general? So that was one of the big items that came up as discussion. And so that will be incorporated into the rule set for your deliberation as well.
And what's your schedule on this? When do we see this draft?
I'm hoping as soon as possible. I'm working on it. So it's.
What was the contract with Sarah?
Oh, the contract, it's a time and materials or a date. It's not a, it's not a list. So it's not a, you must finish by this time. So, so that, that's coming. Bill is not, oh, Bill, you came in under my name. That's why.
Yeah, I've tried my link or I didn't get a link. So I don't know. I couldn't use them here. So that's what I'm using.
We got two Dostons. Okay.
You can be able to rename yourself.
This may be a work plan discussion, but I play, the place where I see this gap is that, you know, we had a bunch of items from the housing strategy. We had a bunch of code amendments from the West Side Plan that we've like half started on these things like three times and we haven't ever finished those things. Like, do we need 7,000 square foot R1 lots in our, inside the city limits? And even if we eliminate the R1 zone or statutorily, we grant rights to build things on single family lots, the question still is, do we need a 7,000 square foot lot in city limits? And that doesn't seem like any of this is getting us to the, to directly square in the eye of what are the development standards? And that's the place that I've been hoping we would get for five years.
Yeah, I guess that's, so this is more product type. This is not what the colors on the map are. This is what occurs within the map. That's that strategy.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to do both, I guess.
But the, I think the item that you suggest is, is still within the strategy itself, you know, or within the housing needs app analysis and buildable lands. And I have that ready to pull that up too. So we could go through that and what other list items are on there if you wanted to look at that. So I have, I have it queued up and ready to go as if you wanted to scroll through the top 10 things.
I guess the point that Bill had made earlier is that we've had a bunch of open meeting dates and we haven't been using them. So when do we get to talk about that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping within a month. So that's my, my hope.
Next year.
No, within a month, you'll be talking about it.
Okay.
Not next year, within a month.
Well, there's only like four meetings left to the year.
Oh, that's a, that's a lot. And there will be a lot happening within that time. So.
A lot of holidays and things like that too, probably.
Yeah. I mean, the good news is that people aren't traveling as much. So, you know, usually we don't, you know, don't do any real meetings around, around Christmas time. But what's the, I'm sorry, yep. So if we have just three or four meetings, what's the quasi judicial schedule looking like?
I don't think we have anything queued up right now, but we always, as we're doing administrative, we could get into the appeals. So we don't have anything set up for quasi judicial before planning commission right now. But administrative work that gets appealed, it comes to you.
Okay.
So nothing guaranteed, nothing guaranteed for you as far as QJR meetings.
Is, so the question I'm asking, another question that might help us as we try and focus on at least planning commission priority. So as Arthur stated, it seems like we have not had any legislative hearings since March. And we have had housing on a priority list for at least three years. So is it, I'm just trying to wonder, do we need like the wrapper projects around it? How do, I guess, what's, what's the reason we haven't had those meetings? And then what do we need to do to get time or resource allocation so that we've established that focus? Cause it doesn't seem like we have had that.
Like we have a meeting, not November 2nd, for example, we could have a meeting November 2nd, but could we do that?
Yeah, you're not gonna, you're not gonna have product to talk about and then. One thing we did do in the legislative manner was the revision of fee and lieu, as well as the exempt of buildings and changing the park downtown parking requirements. That was significant housing action, but it, that kind of jumped in there as a, as one of the parking matters. So that, that was a June meeting. Certainly, you know, we'd love to spend more time on, on that. So in the background is creeping, you know, a transportation system plan that DKS is building, this plan. So there's work happening. It just is not beginning with planning commission. It's beginning outside of planning commission and coming to you in draft form for review.
Well, it seemed like when we were doing the West Side Plan, like there was someone assigned to this from a staff level, which was Kevin. And he, I don't know what portion of his time was allocated to those, those particular activities. But it seems like we don't get something like that, this thing's just never going to get done.
Yeah, we don't, we all are carrying long range plans. Kevin is TSP as well as Rand Road, point person. I'm the point person on the middle housing code. And we're, we're, we're all carrying a little bit of long range water, if you will.
Okay.
So if no, if no one's assigned to it, I agree, it won't get done.
So this is clearly an issue that when we talk about our priorities for the city council, it seems to me like Bill has hit upon a very clearly identified issue, which is that we're not going to make any progress on this high priority item because there's not staff ability to support us on this. If I'm reading it right, you're saying, yeah, you'd love to work on this. You can't. You have no product to discuss with us. So.
We are working on it. It's not coming as fast. It's not as coming as fast as we'd like to. So I mean, that part of, part of the, this year, we did have a little bit of a pandemic that sucked up bandwidth as well as, you know, we had a little bit of staff reduction in our, in our area that, that we've had to make up for, as well as a pretty significant pivot when it comes to the working environments. I mean, I am, so not to make excuses, but there, there is some real, there's some real challenges when it comes to delivering and timely. So.
I don't think that Bill is casting blame. I don't think I'm casting blame. I think what we're talking about is how can we expose this to the city council in such a way that they understand that this has been going slower than any of us would like, and that they can then discuss strategies to speed it up if that's what they want. It seems like a strategic question to me that I would want to know if I were setting city council priorities. You know, you have this high priority of housing because of a whole bunch of things which are, I'm sure unavoidable. We're making very slow progress on it. Is that acceptable? If it's not acceptable, what can be done about it? Yeah, that's what they should talk about.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, I guess where I was headed with all this. It seems like it's a, it's, it's a prioritization issue, right? I mean, everybody's only got so much time in the day. So, and it's, it's, we keep hearing that housing is a priority, but then it's a resource allocation issue because it doesn't happen. And I mean, frankly, I, I, one of the major reasons I was very eager to continue on with yet another planning commission term was because I wanted to try and finally make some contribution and put some of this development standard stuff to bed, not so I could sit around and listen to quasi judicial hearings, unfortunately.
Love quasi judicial hearings. That's, we appreciate your time and attention. I agree. I mean, it's something.
How do we like, how do we like jump to shark here or something like, cause we're just in, we're in like, it's groundhog day.
Jump to shark? Yeah. I don't know that expression.
Yeah.
I don't know. We gotta break out of this somehow. Yeah. Like it seems like it's been going on for a while. I mean, when, when I asked this like four years ago, the answer was, you know, we had these things out of the strategy one of the housing strategy. And everybody said, oh, don't worry about that. The West Side Plan is going to fix it. We spent three years on the West Side Plan and we didn't deal with any of this. Now it's the, something else is going to fix it, but we don't seem to be biting down to deal with it. Well, I mean, I, so I guess the question I'm asking is like, I think we need to clearly highlight, it, it seems like there's a conflict between that priority that keeps clearly getting established and the resources that continually don't get allocated to it.
Yeah. I mean, bandwidth is a, is a, that's a huge resource priority, just pure bandwidth and time to dedicate to it. So I mean, that's, that's.
I guess that's my question. I mean, that's my comment. So it seems like as part of our commentary, I mean, I'm always feeling, you know, we, and this is, I'm speaking as one member of a commission, but I have this opinion, which I can put to motion or get some, I feel like some communication to council on this topic is warranted.
So Bill, if I could just pile on top of what you said, what I would communicate to city council is that if they don't increase staff in the planning area, that it's not reasonable to expect anything to change. You were muted there.
Yeah. No, I'm just taking notes. I'm taking notes to that.
And other people, you know, please jump in. Don't be shy. I see a lot, I see everyone sort of looking, but I'm not sure if anyone's has their opinion on this.
Well, I brought this up last meeting and I don't know if it sounded like the same question as Bill, but I asked about the land use framework, when we were going to be jumping in on the colors on the map. And from what I understood is the last four meetings will be the TSP, the colors on the map, and your, what you, the middle cities, housing products. And then, I mean, if we did those three, that would be pretty fantastic. But I don't know if I misunderstood the last meeting.
I think the colors on the map is shelved. That is, that you are not going to come back to colors on the map this year. I expect TSP and middle, not just middle cities, it'll be middle housing. So it'll be medium sized cities incorporated, as well as taking some of the land use material from the code criteria. And this is what Commissioner Irving had mentioned is, we talked about this in terms of the West Side and some of the material. Some of those revisions are going to make their way into, into this middle cities and middle housing because they had, they had a lot to do with the, the creation of cluster housing, creation of cottage housing. That will be incorporated into this. It's not being left behind. It's being rolled into it.
So there were some other municipal changes. Of course, I remember building height and did we ever get to the numbers of sinks? So there were some municipal codes that we, we never got to, right? We, we kind of selectively did a few of them, but not all of them. Is that also part of the middle housing? Or is that also something that we're going to get to? Does that, I think that covered town housing as well, right? So is that part of the middle housing?
Townhouses are in there. That was also a part of that strategy one that Commissioner Irving had mentioned, allowing townhouses in R2 and R3. And that's, a lot of that work has been done. Some of this may touch upon that by way of, you know, that we call it townhouses. The middle cities code will refer to them as triplexes and quads. So it'll, it, they will, they will have some overlap.
Is there any value? I mean, can we push this forward at all by just getting some of these saying, we want to talk about TSP on such and such a date? And actually, you know, if we have, like we said, we have what, four or five meetings left in the year? I mean, can we at least prioritize them and or suggest our priorities for them? Or are these all coming on different channels?
They're coming down different channels with our partners too. So TSP is with DKS. I also have the fire department and engineering weighing in on that as well. So this is not just a, you know, we're, we're bringing in stakeholders along the way. So this is not just a planning staff issue. We have to, we have to bring in partner voices as well. So part of that is getting, getting that aligned. I don't, I would resist putting it on a map or on a date when it's not well refined. TSP, I could give you some cross sections on how they look, but I know we just finished those off with the planning commission recommendations. So that's not the entire TSP, but that's, that's a significant portion that you all discussed during the West Side. So that, that is coming, I'm hoping that will be back within a week or so. So that, that is a possibility to preview that.
I guess I just wonder, I mean, if some of this just becomes human nature where unless people have a hard deadline, it just keeps dragging out, right? So it's like, we're waiting for these people, we're waiting for those people. I mean, do those people have deadlines? I mean, does DKS or whatever say that this has to be done by November 1st or whatever? I mean, do they have hard deadlines? Whenever you get it done?
No, it all revolves around budget within the calendar or not the calendar year, the budgetary year. So we, although we have a 2020 work plan project, these budget numbers will come up in July. So, but we'll have new.
We're talking about, we're talking about 2020 product here, you know, 2020, 21 product, which has already been budgeted. There's not a budgetary questionnaire, is there?
No, this is budgeted and going. I'm just saying like that, that will be the end date when there is no budget left. So 20, in the end of 21 or middle 21.
You totally lost me there. You're saying we have no way to know when this will be done? It's just done sometime before the money runs out in June?
Oh, no, that would be the date certain when it would not be allowed. Our two DKS contracts don't, they have a deliverable task, not a, they don't have a time schedule on them. So.
That kind of makes it difficult to work with. Is that how these things are always done? I mean, I certainly see, I think Tina's made an excellent point that if I were a contractor, I'd sure like that. I mean, I'm sure Tina would like that in her, all of her contracts, but I suspect that she actually gets publication deadlines. So do we, you know, is there a reason? Obviously, you're not going back and redoing this, but as you move forward, is there a reason why we don't work on a basis of, of an actual deliverable deadline?
Uh, it would be probably more along the cost measure. I mean, our deliverable, we can set deliverables if we're on a calendar deadline. It just doesn't leave much room for if we miss deadlines because things coming up in the meantime. That sometimes themselves against our will. Again, UJRs, court cases, those things have a way of interfering with deliverables. And it's partially our, you know, the, we don't send the consultant out to do the work and then we hope that they come back. I mean, or they come back and we're acceptable. We, we are pretty hands on with this stuff. So part of it is our bandwidth and our ability to turn work back to them.
Well, I think that's what we're all trying to understand. And I think that goes to Tina's question too. I see Sue shaking her head. You know, we're not, again, we're not trying to, you know, be critical and say, Dustin, why haven't you guys been working? I think everyone knows that, that you're doing all sorts of things and that there, you know, that you've got a three ring circus you're running over there. But we're trying to understand the subject of, on today's agenda is, is the, is the work plan for next year. You know, we just keep, this is year after year. I mean, Bill pointed out, what, 10 years ago, is that right? You know, I've been on this for longer than I can, I care to admit. I'm off of this in another month. And it just feels like we've been spinning our wheels on this very important subject. And I'm not saying the things that we've worked on aren't important, but again, this is, this is an existential threat to Hood River's survival. If we don't have housing to support our economy, our economy will not recover. And this is so fundamental and yet it doesn't feel like we're set up for success. I think that the city council needs to know that and understand that. And I know that you want to put a bright face on it because you don't want to say, hey, we just can't, we can't do it. But it seems to me like you can't do it.
That's the, when it comes down to the work plan, there has to be a resource ask. So I mean, that's the, that's the element to it. It's the emphasis, execute the plan.
I mean, the comment that I will have with the West Side Plan is, you know, with all its starts and stops and everything that happened with it, it seemed like that was a clearly defined project with some specific objectives with a milestone plan that was published and we marched to it. And we were moderately effective at it. Kevin, I think, you know, got his stuff done and delivered on, you know, some schedule that we understood and could anticipate. And it's really hard because we don't have any of that for anything else. And we have the stuff that we keep, are, we're, we keep getting told these things are priorities and we also think they are priority. So how do we get to that point with some of these, I guess, is my question?
Well, what's in the works or what's coming up?
Oh, I mean, with what, with what, I guess with whatever council determines are the priorities.
Well, they get budgeted and done within the calendar year or within a budget year. I mean, that's part of it is this TSP will be done in the calendar year or excuse me, the budgetary year. So will the middle housing code, because that's the budget that's been put forward towards it. I would like to see it done within the calendar year. I'm working on that, but there's funds that are pledged to get these things done and consulting work too.
Well, I think, I think the thing that would, that I might propose is if and when we get to this point of, you know, we, we did with the West Side Plan, we established this methodology where we were going to have quasi judicial, one week, meeting a month and legislative, the other meeting a month. And that seemed to be, I think it was effective. And I think the commission, you know, we, we knew what was coming at us. And I think what I would advocate for is that if we understand and council communicates whatever their priorities to us, that either we as a planning commission or us as a team, planning commission and staff or even staff establishes that type of milestone delivery based around assuming we got a QJR date once a month. And then what are we going to do on the other meeting a month? I mean, I would love for the next 12 months to know every other, every legislative meeting date and what we're going to do on it.
Totally agree.
I think that goes, I think it goes to Tina's point. If we don't have a schedule, we'll never do anything.
Yeah. And I totally agree that reserving one for legislative is so important. Otherwise, these quasi judicial things just, yeah, they keep filling the void. And not that they're not important, but we're never going to progress on any of our goals if we don't like save that second meeting or first meeting, whichever one we pick for our legislative agenda. That's, it has to happen.
I guess maybe one of our requests for, I mean, we, we could be back ending into one of our requests for a council, a planning commission priority is that we request that council identify as the first priority for the commission, the planning commission and staff to establish a legislative hearing schedule for the year.
So you know, Bill, let me build on top of that because I think that really what we need is, is that within the planning department, they need to have staff assigned the same way divided as Tina described it, that there has to be staff that has defined time to work on things that are not QJR.
Of course.
Without having that, that definitive time, they're not able to support us and, and, and give us this, those meetings that we want to have.
Right. But I, again, if there's no specific date for delivery, then in some cases you've, you know, it's, it's covey, whatever your four squares are, right? Urgent, important, urgent, not important, not important, urgent, right? So we get into the urgent, not important category of work.
I'm not saying not to do that, Bill. I'm saying that if we're to be successful, so we can set up those meetings, but staff won't be able to actually meet those deliverables unless they have a segregation of their time also.
Agreed. I think the two, I think the two go hand in hand, right?
Yeah, no, I totally agree.
Yep.
I think one part of that worked well with the, the West Side and you used that work plan when we broke down, here's the days that we're going to meet. And here's the, the pieces is that the work product was done for evaluation. So rather than inventing it, you spent, or we spent 18 months leading up to that, building the work plan for 18 months of evaluation. So I think that's the anticipation now with the work plan to be evaluated. I think that's, that's part of where we're at now is the work plan isn't, or the work product isn't completed for evaluation. The work product is in process, anticipating an evaluation. This is just the difference between the two.
Sure.
So Dustin, I just want to understand that. Do you mean the work plan from Sarah Architects on the housing piece and the work plan from D, from what is it, DKS on the TSP? Are those the two things you're talking about there?
Yeah, the, not the work plan, the work.
Not the work plan, but the, the work product. I'm sorry.
Right. The product is being built right now. Right. The product is being built right now.
And you don't expect either of those to really have to be done until the end of the budgetary year?
Oh, no, I, I expect them to be done before that. I think that was the day that, that was the, when there is no money to do those things. So they, they have to be completed well before that. And that was just the final.
I, I, I do wonder though, what's, what's the incentive for these contractors that we've hired, that you've hired out for? What's the incentive for them to be done by a certain date?
Because they have a, they have, the longer they work on them, that we have a, shall not exceed on their numbers. So if they execute the project in a short amount of time, they've turned those.
So could we at least get an update on where they are? Like what percent of that not to exceed number we're at, just to have somebody? Cause right now I have like, I don't know if we're talking about next June, because the budgetary year goes to the end of June. Or we talking about before the end of this calendar year, we'll see these products.
I'm hoping to see some of these products before calendar year.
And, and so that's two of what I consider the three things we want to talk about. The other one is like the colors on the map and that's kind of.
Colors on the map is not, is, just put that one out of your mind for now. So unless you want to, that we can move right into, is that what you want to look at by way of next year's product? Go back to colors on the map because to some extent we're getting colors on the map. You just heard colors on the map last meeting. You had a request from an applicant to come through with, to rezone property with the request before you. I mean, so although it may not be city out in front of this, those things are actually happening.
So I don't think I know what that means, what things are actually happening?
The colors on the map. So we had a rezone change or a map change request that would change it on the map. We took that through QJR process and you get to see the product or some semblance of the product that was going to be entitled within that.
Right.
That, that is a, that is a map change. It's just, we didn't initiate it.
Right.
Seiving and actually using, as you can see in your findings of fact, elements from the West Side Plan neighborhood to put this. So.
And my argument on the colors on the map has been that before you argue about what colors to put on the map, you, you want to be arguing about what those colors mean. And so I understand that that, what the colors mean is going to be part of the output of Sarah in the Sarah report, but I don't, having not seen it, I don't really understand how much, how thoroughly that answers my question. So were you asking another question or were you just nodding?
Just nodding.
No, thanks. Okay.
I, I would agree. I mean, I, I, it's harder for me to have an opinion on what the colors on the map are if we don't know what the colors mean. And that's what I understood. We were going to be trying to figure out next. But I, that, that's, I, I don't know what the scope of work for Sarah was. I don't know. I mean, all I know is what I see from the housing strategy, which is like, is, should our R1 lot size be 7,000? Should our R2 lot size be 5,000? And I haven't heard Dustin say anything about that. He's, so how do we do this housing type, but that doesn't go square at our, what are our development standards and are they appropriate?
Right. I thought that's.
And that, and that goes back to, that goes back to lot size, building height, setback, lot coverage, which is one that kills us on a bunch of stuff.
So I, I, I thought that all of this was part of what we're expecting to see from Sarah. Is that not the case?
I think it's going to be performance based on site specific and product type. So it's going to look at what do these middle housing types look like with, on a 5,000 square foot lot? Which is the typical, we were not looking at reducing the, the R1 to from 7,000 down. I wouldn't expect that in the work product.
But that's, that's like item one on the housing strategy to do list. And then item two is examine whether a fire, and you know, the whole West Side is comprised of R1 zone, which is all going to be plotted at 7,000.
Except if you do strategy one where it makes zone changes and they change, which is exactly what just happened previously.
Y- y- yeah, but I mean, I think we're also in the, we're also in the intent to preserve. I mean, or the intent, you know, that, that's because we had a developer who was interested to do that. I, 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 I agree, but then the question is, is, is 5,000 square foot the right lot size for R2? Or R3?
Well, we.
That was, that was bullet number two in strategy one.
Right. But we already allow divisions now, which was from the strategy for, of R2 and R3 lots less than 5,000. All the townhomes come in at 2,100 or to 2,500. So I mean, there, there are divisions for housing types that are now permissible. So if we reduce the lot size, we're not actually getting at, no, we go to 5,000, we're getting at single family house size.
Dustin, Dustin, you arguing.
Okay.
Are you arguing that, that that item is no longer on the list because we've, we've, we've solved it by, by, you know, obeying the state law concerning divisions?
I think it's less of, less of a driver, less of a driver than it was before, because now we're.
Shouldn't we, shouldn't we as a planning commission discuss that? But it, that well may be, that, that may well be a, a, a reasonable conclusion, but I don't recall us having that, you know, having that discussion.
Yeah, I expect some of the Sarah code to not evaluate 7,000 versus not. It's, this is how you do this housing and product type, this housing type. This is, and having it not just simply be attached to 7,000 square foot lots. Like I, I expect there to be some adjustments made that don't just look at our, what is R1 in general. It looks at, this is how you do middle housing. And if you require 7,000 square foot lots, you're never going to get it. I mean, that's, that to me is, so it's not going to just look at the broad anal, analysis of what, what is the code? It's in general, it's going to narrow in on, this is how you deliver this diverse housing type, without having to go back and relitigate the base zones. So a custom package to allow some of these things. So you will most likely see the draft come out with, all right, we're not going to fall in love with a lot standards. This is the outcome of the product. This is what the product looks like and, and we'll back into that. So this is what the standards are for a cluster. This is what the standards are for, you know, a cottage home. They will be geek amongst themselves. They're not going to rely on, this is R1 in general. I think you're going, you, it's being drafted to be a departure from that.
So you're going to say if you have this particular product type, you can do it in any zone. And I mean, it, 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 it seems our whole developing code is, our whole development code is based upon development standards. I'm trying to work backwards. I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, you've got to do a land division somehow. You can do a subdivision, right? Or a partition. And all, you know, we've got dense, number, you know, density calculations and all our stuff. And we just keep getting bit in the butt by being able to do stuff by, the R1 standard says this, the R2 standard says this.
Yeah, we're going to get away from, this, this plan is part of the reason why it's long is it's to break away from that. It's to away from that convention.
Do you mean that that won't matter or that, that, that we're not addressing that now?
A little of both. I think this, this is, this solution for this housing type does not hinge upon addressing R1, 7,000 square foot lot standards or R2, 5,000 lot standards. We're going to use those as the basis for some assumptions, but those aren't the conventions that are going to drive this.
Or height or setback or, or lot coverage. I mean, those are the, the issues that Bill keeps correctly pointing out as being, you know, that's what we spend all our time talking about. And that's what is forcing builders, developers, homeowners into certain very narrow outcomes.
Setback, height and lot coverage will all be addressed specific to this product.
Okay.
And also specific to the idea that middle housing is supposed to be compatible with your neighborhoods. You know, the idea that the size and the product and the outcome becomes, you know, similar to the, to the end product there. It's, we end up with a basic character of what, you know, you're taking cues from your neighborhood. We're, we won't have a standard that talks about compatibility, but the standards should be intended to promote compatibility. Because this is clear and objective.
Is this.
I get all of that.
Is this an approach that, I mean, I, I have feel like we're trying to make ourselves live in some commoditized community. It, it seems like, is that where you're trying to say you're taking this, this will lead us? We just stamp out.
Bill, I don't follow you.
Does it, what?
Can, can you explain what that means?
Well, um, what, what, what was the, what was the movie where there was, everybody lived in the giant bubble? And everything.
The Truman Show.
The Truman Show. Yeah, exactly. I mean, are, are you saying, hey, you can build this thing and you can stick this thing wherever you want? And it's got to look like this. And we're making some design police determination that that's the way it looks. And that's acceptable to our community. And so we should just plug them all over the place.
Some elements of here's, it will be here are the characteristics and you work within that. I setback.
I mean, it's, it's hard. We're asking a lot of questions and you don't.
Yeah.
You don't have been given us anything. So all it does is take more questions. That's a problem. Sorry.
No, it's a, it's good because you, you're, you're interested in it and it will come in. So I'm going to, I'm going to give you an example, an example chart. All right. Hold on, I'm going to, I'm going to share here. I'm going to bring then up from, from.
Hold on, everybody.
Yeah, this, hopefully this goes well. How's it looking?
Yeah, we see it.
Yep.
Middle storyboard.
So this is the middle storyboard. So this is what, kind of what I'm working through. This is an example from, actually from Milwaukee on their cluster housing. But the reason why I use is because it has a lot of the elements that we're going to be starting to talk about. So here's your maximum building footprint, some of the, just the parameters in there. And the idea, and some of the idea coming from, you're, you're still going to have your opportunity to do your townhouses at however many thousand square feet and do the lot coverage. This is going to provide a clear and objective path. So if you, you know, if you stay within these parameters, we're going to recommend that this thing goes right to building permit past the land use process. Versus if you want to continue on with your, what is kind of the typical townhouse product, the highest and best use. You know, that is still going to be available. It's just you're, you're going to have to continue to, to go through the, the standards that you go through now. So again, this isn't the end, this isn't the end product, but it's the idea of how you start laying out, you know, number of structures, some mathematics here. Of course, separation, we need to have separation between units, front, rear and side. Again, they have to be clear and objective. Lot coverages, these are some of the, again, basic parameters that go into this thing. But then again, I'm going to, I'm going to bring up another.
So Dustin, are you saying that rather than having, you know, R2 have a specific setback, specific lot coverage, specific, you know, height restriction, that instead the housing types would have these clear and objective standards attached to them?
A, a little of both. It'll be this house, this zone will be this. So the, it's not going to just homogenize R1, R2, R3. Because part of this is, you know, we have to protect some of the R3 product that I can just allow the lowest use there. We have to make sure that if we're going to go through R3 zone, that it actually develops to a certain density expectation. Much like we want to promote compatibility within R1. There's a certain building type and form. How do we build these? Or what, what of these uses become available within R1 and how do they look? So it's not just, it's not uniform amongst the zones. It's just in each zone, it has a particular characteristic to it. So the idea that the duplex was going to be considered in R1, that doesn't mean that all of a sudden we have the full triplex and quad. There's going to be, there will be a breakdown of the uses that are permitted by each zone.
Well, I understand the uses, but then the, that table that I saw for the cluster housing suggests that if you're building cluster housing and we say cluster housing is permissible in R2 and R3, then that seems to override all the other generalized R2 and R3 parameters that we've seen in the past. And I think that's what Bill's been asking about. And maybe the answer is that it doesn't, you know, maybe you just haven't been communicating to us that we don't need to worry about that because it's built into these housing types.
Yeah. I don't, I don't want to say you don't need to worry about it, but the, this work product that's coming out now should preempt a much of that. The conventions of the R2 and the R1 and the R3 will be, but it, it's not going to be the driver of what we have here. It's not going to be the driver. It, it will have some site and product specific rules and regulations that, that are not reliant on the underlying R1 and R2.
Well, let me give you an example. So we, we had all of these, we had wonderful, many hours we sat talking about garage configurations and what your street setback was based on, on the shape of your garage and where your garage, you know, hit, whether your garage was behind the front facade or whatever. And I'm sure we had many pleasant dreams thinking about all of that. But that is part of the overarching zone, residential zone. And it looks to me like those discussions will be subsumed into a housing type discussion.
Yeah, let me, uh, you're still going to end up with some of those discussions because those are, those would be the parameters. They wouldn't just be based on R1. It would be, here's what the cottage product is. The cottage product says, you know, your garage cannot face the street, you know?
Sure.
Something like that, but it's not going to be just in R1 or R2.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it'll be product specific.
Does that make sense, Bill?
Yes, this sounds like just, I'm slightly skeptical because I heard the West Side Plan was going to solve all our problems. And now I'm hearing this is going to solve all our problems.
And I'm not going to say it's going to solve all the problems. It's going to solve hopefully a, a scope of problems. That's why I don't want to mention that, you know, that these other housing strategies that are brought up are all of a sudden, no, not an issue. I think they're still an issue. I think we're going to have more issues than, than we know what to deal with. This is just going to deal with some particular issues. And so part of this code, and I'm, and I'm going to bring up another piece here from storyboard. I hope.
Maybe if there are specific housing types that we're trying to accomplish and we have nice, well worked out code that says, if you want to build this housing type, here's the restrictions to building this housing type. You don't have to worry about anything else. Just look at this chapter. That's great.
Right. So that's kind of what this is going to look like is here, here is some ready. You know, this is, this is just what we've been talking back and forth on, on the consulting side is the idea, you know, this is intended to try to promote some more accessible housing in different configurations. Now, how do we, how do we build those in? And this is, this is back to a cluster type. This, this now is not at all even remotely possible within the city of Hood River under the current zoning code. Not an R1, not an R2, not an R3, maybe C2, but. So this is the idea of here, this is how we can introduce some of these products in, uh, just it to some extent into the mix. It changes some of them. You know, it just changes the, what's on the portfolio of possible uses and, and really trying to do it in a clear and objective way. So, but I think what's important in this, and I think what, why Sarah is really valuable is they become an auditor of this is not acceptable to the marketplace. This is something that is acceptable. And to bring in the idea of graphics and outcome. This is supposed to be predictable. It's not just supposed to be designed by series of prohibitions. And whatever comes out at the end is, is what is desirable. It's specifically, and this is more of a form based approach. I would call this a hybrid form. Because we're not getting so specific into the design features that you have to have. You know, your architecture needs to be orient craftsman, you know, this length and height. It, but it's going to set up some form. It, but it's going to set up some form-based design standards that we're looking you to build to.
It looks like classic monopoly pieces.
That, that's, that's, I'm on a budget. No, but the idea that, um, they're supposed to be, you should be able to look at those and have some determination of, okay, here, here's how we bias a house towards a green. Here's how we move houses towards that start fronting streets. Here we have eight housing products that really have one curb cut. Or we have eight units with one curb cut. This is how you accomplish those things.
And Sarah has an economist working on this too. Is that how these, uh, uh, numbers got in there?
Uh, this is from Milwaukee number and I'll pro, I will have some economist check. I will do the double check. So I'm, I'm borrowing from Portland Metro for some of this and actually work that's already been really good, that's already been done. So we'll, we'll try to do our numbers as well. But I think that's where the price sensitivity comes in. And I think some policy decisions, you know, parking costs money.
Yep.
Lot coverage costs money. There's some real implications to some of these things when it comes to affordability. But there's also things that are, you know, the idea that we don't want to just forego everything for the sake of affordability. You want to have a, again, a compatible outcome. This is, these are, these are good design standards. This is how this product becomes incorporated and knit into the community.
You, you, you want design standards that discourage use of cars rather than export the parking of cars as a problem for your neighbors.
Right. Well, I guess that's how much do you want to discourage, prohibit parking? That's, I mean, there's a spectrum of how that, that is accomplished.
You want people to have the option of not having to have parking if they're going to adopt the lifestyle where they don't need a car.
Right.
We currently don't allow that. We, we say, sorry, you have to have a car. We'll assign one to you if you don't have one.
That did not get written into the code.
Okay.
So, so that's kind of how.
Sorry. No, that's Tina. Okay.
So with, with, with that in mind, uh, you know, that's kind of what the, the middle housing code looks like. And some of the, some of the features that we'll ask you guys to evaluate based, and it should be based around some of the logic behind the West Side, some of the logic behind the housing needs analysis. Also, it'll be based upon some of the housing, the house bills, uh, and some of the mandates that are coming up for the city. So I think one good thing that we do have is we have a little more flexibility outside the middle housing code. Uh, because we're not under the mandate. So we could take some things from that code and be a little more flexible with it than, than what, uh, say the Dallas would be able to do. So we, we have the opportunity to, to adjust our code to maybe be a little more customized and supportive of maybe the Hood River value system.
Right. Okay. Uh, so look, we're still in planning director's update. We're kind of leaning into the priority, uh, ideas for 2021. Dustin, do you want to wrap up your update in some way so we can just move along in the agenda?
Yeah, I think that, that's, that's all for me. Um, but I.
Okay, that's the wrap up.
That, that's my wrap. In summary, uh, I think that actually, um, does a lot by going, you know, transitioning to, into what's next. You know, that's what's, so you don't have to vote for, for that or prioritize it anymore because it's budgeted and it's in action. But there will be what, what now? What more to come?
Right. So we're going to get into that in one minute, but, uh, um, so does anyone have any questions on Dustin's update?
Sure. Well, the, what, what that kind of, kind of for me begs is the question of, you know, is this going to be something that's baked out in code? And are these housing types that the, uh, general populace is going to be interested to see? So we obviously have to determine, I mean, it, it, it doesn't seem like we've had any discussion around what the housing types the community is interested in. So we probably have to have that. And then there's probably some code stuff that goes around that. So I, exactly for this, I, I would like to under, I would like to see instead of just kind of, hey, this is coming. I'd like to see these are the steps, these are deliverables along the way. This is the date when we're going to have this done and turned over. And so I guess my question would be, okay, Dustin, for that particular project, how do we do it? And what's the outcome? And when are we done? It's a good example of what kind of what I think we could be asking council for, for other resource allocation.
Yeah, I'm, like I said, I hope within a month you'll have the draft.
And then what do we do with it?
Well, so let's, let's, let me declare that we are in item number three because that really, I think, I think what you're saying, Bill, is, is we need to ask council to give planning the resources so we can do something with this report. Because it sounds like you have the money to hire the contractors to prepare this report and to prepare the TSP and to prepare, uh, what was the third thing? I forget what that was. But when we get all of that back, um, wrapping that up into actual code changes that we're going to put through the hearing process and vote on and pass through the city council. We're not staffed to do that.
I hope to bring to you a code ready version, not just a concept.
But how are you going to do that on any schedule, given that you're, that we, you, you can't support the need of the planning commission for one meeting a month to discuss these code objects because you're constantly being pulled off onto development issues.
I hope to make it perfect and it's going to be one and done.
Yeah, but I mean, you're joking, right?
It's like we're going to have a, a, a hundred community members participating or we should in this. These are like wholesale changes to the fabric of our town.
I think a lot of them are, are born from 18 months of hearing and what we heard there. It's not a complete, it's not a complete departure.
Our 18 months of hearing, we didn't get to talk about this particular topic, which is the one that everybody wanted to talk about. And we just said, we're going to talk about it later. I mean, I, I think we could spend a year on the thing that you're putting in front of us. I mean, I maybe, um, I, 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 I hope we don't.
Yeah, I hope we don't either because.
It seems like the community is probably going to want to talk about it.
I would guess that they will. You just have to look at the minutes from the previous meetings to know that.
Yeah. So, so maybe, maybe the, we're, we're still on topic three. Uh, or we are in topic three. So then how do we lay out? You know, maybe the request for council is, you know, let's, or request for council and staff is commission thinks that there's going to be a lot of interest in this topic. We'd like to get to the point of allocating specific resource time so that we can run, uh, uh, we can run a schedule on it, just like we did for West Side Plan.
All right, now we're getting them.
Is that?
Yeah. So I mean, so to me, it, it, the difference is development versus planning. We have a development department. We don't have a planning department. Because push comes to shove, your priority is always going to be on the development because you have defined state timelines. And unless we have some staff, uh, allocated or adequate staff allocated so that we can actually work on the planning issues, we don't get to work on the planning issues. And this is a perpetual issue. This has been an issue for decades.
Well, I think.
City council's been addressing it and been, uh, uh, increasing the, you know, allocation of staff a little bit. But to me, this says that we're not there yet. But the, the, the lack of progress in the last two years since the West Side Concept Area Plan Report, subject matter, whatever, was prepared, uh, tells me that we still haven't gotten to the place that we can solve this problem from a staff point of view. You can't support our meetings.
I think some of it is getting to working the code to where it's the lift for routine matters isn't so heavy. I think that's, that's part of it is the.
Well, it may be in long-term that, uh, that the, that the needs, uh, the, the needs, the development side needs drop off, even if development traffic doesn't drop off because the code is a lot easier to deal with. And there are fewer things requiring handholding or, or appeals or, 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 you know, lengthy processes. That's all, all great, but we're not anywhere near that yet. So if we, if we, if we don't staff to the point that we can actually have these discussions and move the code along, then we'll never get there. So, you know, it's, it's not like we can use that savings in staffing from the future to solve our problem now.
And it seems like if the objective is to, we need more capacity through the pipeline to meet the housing, uh, forecast. You know, this is a hundred units a year and I don't know that we're hitting that. That was for May 2000 units in 20 years, a hundred units a year. Um, and even if we improve some of these processes to be able to deliver against them, then we have to be using the processes more. To Arthur's point, right? Does that make sense? My, does my statement make any sense? I mean. Yes. Yes. So, so maybe, maybe the big push here is that, or at least one kind of real, uh, priority for council is that as Arthur said, we need a planning department, not a development facilitation department.
We need both.
What?
We need both.
We, we do need both, but we need some specific dedicated resource allocation to do long-term planning. And that is not, you know, in my 10 years on the planning commission, that hasn't happened. I mean, it, I, I think it did moderately effectively with the West Side Plan.
So I, I feel like we're kind of just spinning our wheels and going around in circles because we haven't seen whatever the output is from Sarah to understand what the next steps are. And I feel like we just have to wait on that. But the catch is that we also have to make some suggestions to city council of, of a work plan for next year. So we should be able to put something in place that just says, addressing the Sarah project, whatever they come out with, has to be a priority that the planning commission can evaluate completely in a six-month time window or something like that. And just, just to keep it moving, because what I'm hearing is Dustin feels like this, what Sarah comes up with is going to reduce a lot of other requirements for the planning department. And I think Bill and Arthur, who have this much longer tenure, have a higher level of frustration than maybe I do. I always want to see what, I, I want to see the report and I want to see what happens next. Um, I, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I, no, I, I agree. I'm trying, I'm trying to think of not necessarily, I'm, I'm, I've been thinking of like, you know, on the list of council priorities for planning commission, we've been asked to say, give us your list, right? Item number one for me would be that we dedicate every other meeting to legislative matters. Planning commission or staff or city management establishes a schedule for what those meetings are going to be ahead of time. And I understand we have, we adapt, but I think for me, I, I'd like to, I'd like to put that as number one on our list.
And I would, I would add that, uh, we want to see adequate staffing so that staff can support those meetings.
Yeah. Number two would probably be on my list would be adequately staff the planning department to support long-term planning.
And I just feel like those requests are not, are not, uh,
already was.
Work plan. Well, no, I don't think they're work plan request. I think they're, they're requests expressed out of, again, a frustration maybe, but I, I don't think we're in the right position to say to city council, this is how the planning department should be staffed. Is that, is that our role?
Well, so I, I think my understanding is the way that this is set up is the work plan feeds into the budget process. And the budget process.
Okay, that helps. Yeah. Yeah.
And so, uh, you know, they start with the work plan in October, November. And then, uh, in January, February, March, city departments then work on their budget based on that work plan that the, so the city council is going to approve the work plan sometime in December. And then people are going to work on their budget asks based on that. And then April, the budget committee starts discussing it. So maybe we're wording it the wrong way, but I think Bill and I have both, you know, are both pretty confident that, that, uh, that we understand reasonably well what Sarah is working on. And, and whatever they do, it's not going to be fully formed enough that it simply comes through a planning commission meeting and we have a hearing and we take testimony for 25 minutes and we pass it. It's not going to be anything like that. It's going to be something that's going to require weeks and weeks of massaging and, and debating and reforming and thinking about it and figuring out how to insert this into our code. Unless there's someone like Kevin, you're assigned pretty much full-time on it, that discussion won't be supported well enough for us to make any forward progress. So we're, we're trying to dramatize to the city council that you have this major priority that you've set. We're not seeing ourselves as being successful in addressing that, that priority without a clearer delineation of planning versus development. So maybe that's just to restate the same thing, but yeah.
Yeah. Okay. That helps.
So I think that's, you know, part of this is the expectation that the work product is going to be the middle housing plan. So kind of what the resources that come out of that are, you know, we want to focus on getting this done. And then to that end, it's, and it's going to take resources to do this.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I, I, I'm still back to, and maybe I lost everybody, but I mean, I, I think one of the actual work products could be a legislative hearing calendar. Like make that a project, assign someone the task, assign them the brain power or the resource time to figure out how we can do that. Like make that a project. Develop a annual legislative calendar.
I mean, I think Tina brought that up before.
Yeah, I'm exactly with you. I don't think you lost us. And I guess to me, it seems when I got this first email saying, oh, we're going to come up with our new projects for next year. My first thought was, well, we have so many projects from last year we haven't finished.
That's why I'm getting it. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Keep circulating the projects from one year to the next year to the next year and just, we should just handle this we hinted in last year.
Yeah. And, and to your point, it's like our, our priority should be not just, these are the projects we want done is this is how we see a way forward that we can actually get them done. So I'm totally with you on the cap and the staff suggestion.
So.
Suggested a one, two, three on our, uh, priority list. And we can debate those further, but I think he, he pretty clearly, uh, laid out a one, two, three. And I suggested that we need to be particularly careful about how we uh, communicate to city council the nature of this planning need. You know, the planning need versus development need that, that has to be dramatized to them that look, you've set this priority. You're not going to achieve the priority if you don't, uh, you know, i- i- if, if there's not staff time available to allow us to proceed through this schedule, which is going to set as number three, uh, work product. So, uh, where do we go after that?
And the, and the council solution could be that, um, for administrative applications, they hire a contract resource so that Kevin can do other things, right? For example.
Well, they can, they can budget however they want, but yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess.
The county is just bringing contractors to, to do a lot of the, 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 uh, the, 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 the state mandated schedule issues. They bring in a contractor who just doesn't.
So if you have 12 meetings, my question is, what would you like to populate those 12 meetings with? What topics do you want to populate that meeting with? 12.
I didn't hear you, Tina. Go ahead.
Oh, TSP, whatever that's going to get to us.
Bill, do you want to put some meat on this?
I, I, I think, I mean, the, the thing, I, I'm a, I'm a big supporter in identifying, um, housing types that the city is interested in seeing and then understanding the development standards around those. So it sounds like that's already what Dustin is working to deliver. But I think that's a, you know, I, I'd love to have that meeting and I think it's going to be unfortunately more.
Yeah, I think that's several meetings. So Dustin had that to the list. Several meetings on that. TSP is going to be. Yeah, I think that's double meetings. So Dustin had that to the list. Double meetings on that. TSP is going to be at least, you know, probably two or three meetings, just because it will be, you know, vehicular transport is going to be one, but we're going to want to have some pretty clear focus on on bike ped, that sort of thing. And I suspect it's not going to finish in the same meeting.
So the current TSP is now based upon your recommendations from the streets framework from the West Side. So it's a pretty finite list. Are you suggesting another list of TSP updates? So you provided input on that that list already by way of the West Side. That needs to be implemented through its amendment. So you went through the framework and we drew out those those recommendations. And those are going to be the updates to this current TSP. Are you suggesting a subsequent TSP amendment? Or just.
No, but I thought it was just, wasn't it coming back to us again for review? Yeah, that's all I'm talking about, just to get that so we can kind of dot that, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's and get it completed.
Okay.
People can have a lot of opinions on this stuff when it's actually in writing. I guarantee you that all the people who testified before are going to testify again, and we're going to have discussions about these. And it's going to be at least one meeting on vehicular parts of it, and at least one meeting on on bike ped.
So I got I got two two topics for 12 meetings. One that came up last.
How about the rest of the municipal code updates, the ones we didn't get to?
So some of those we went through in a discussion, I think we'll tackle a couple of them within with this, I think, for the most part, those the omnibus is is kind of been put to rest for now. So one other one was Henderson Creek. That was, I think Tina brought up was the idea that Henderson Creek was a the request to get out in front of that and actually rather than wait for the development to come through, come up with a strategy. It was just one that was suggested last year that didn't make it on.
Right. And Mark also, I think.
No, I'm on by that. That's.
I would love that.
Is that a chapter five, chapter five, or title five? What was the thing you said two weeks ago where we were talking about it not really being a designated?
Goal five resource.
Five resource. Yeah.
So we.
I'm sorry, Mark, are you suggesting that we need to reopen the goal five resource discussion or I you occupy there?
It sounded like Henderson Creek is not listed as a goal five resource. So does that need to be part of this? And then in addition, right, this corridor along it, is that part of the TSP? So I don't know how we connect these things together, but but certainly there's land for sale right now around it and nothing's happening.
So it's going to end up in the TSP through this shortlist. That was one of the matters that was run out, you know, the trails, the to be, but I think what Tina had mentioned was the idea of not just having it in the plan, but getting and developing a strategy for some active upfront acquisition.
Correct. Yeah, that's what I was thinking about. Yeah.
Oh, I'm gonna I'm going to advocate just that we maybe this would be a way we could focus some discussion to list off the goals from strategy one and see whether or not they make sense to stick on this list. Right? So 1 dot 1 was identify land to rezone and allow additional moderate to hide density development. That's the map discussion. We talked about, but Dustin, you summarized that you think it's just going to happen organically. And we've also said that we need to figure out what the colors on the map mean before we do that. So that's probably a lower priority. That does everyone agree with that?
I would think that'd be a higher priority, like the conversation we had last time was about an R2 project and whether it was the right R2 project. There was a discussion in West Side about R2A, right? So don't we want to have the the makeup of the colors before we have a discussion about colors on the map?
That that's what I think that what I'm hearing is that Dustin's missing middle is the the
Makeup of the colors.
They're the blocks. They're the tool. And we're going to figure out where we can put them on the map. And once we figure that out, then maybe we have the map color discussion, but it seems like we got to do some stuff before we do that one. But right, Dustin?
Yeah, I wouldn't say they're the colors. They're they're a missing part of the spectrum of colors. So it's but that should change the face of, you know, what what do your neighborhoods develop like? That depends on what uses are permitted. And if you don't have a use that's permitted, it's clearly it's already driving what the face of your neighborhoods look like. So that's going to change some of the things that would be impacted in the colors of the map. So I agree, you're working on what do the colors mean before you start changing the map? I felt that that was the sentiment of planning commission for last year.
Yeah, so 1 dot 1 is changing the colors on the map. And I think at this point, I would maybe we vote or does I would say that with 12 meetings, I don't know if we get to that one, if certainly it's a lower priority to me. Anyone else?
Correct. I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
So Dustin, this list that we're generating now, we have a we're not turning this into city council immediately. We have another meeting where we can discuss this, right? So so we can be kind of drafting you. You're asking us to generate a list during a meeting, which is never a great way to use time. Is this something where we can go off and work independently, feed some information into you and 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 come back and discuss it as a group?
Yeah, what I'll do is I'm taking the list down and I'm going to truncate them to a a discrete, this is what came out of the meeting. So prior and that allow you to prioritize it. So.
Well, so.
I could list the pieces from the strategy if you wanted to. Here's the elements from the strategy one that Bill's referring to that I believe have not been accomplished. What's outstanding?
That's that's what I'm going through the list. I'm just reading. 1 dot 2 allowing tower houses. We dealt with 1 dot 2. 1 dot 3 and 4 are similar. They say reduce lot size in R1, reduce lot size in R2. Those are 1, 3, and 1, 4. We have not dealt with those. We could able that or discuss revise the PUD ordinance, develop a cottage housing code. Revise ADU, we tackled revise manufactured park standards. Remise methodology for building height on slopes and grades, and then evaluate increasing building height for multifamily development. That's the list.
I think those are all the ones we haven't done on that list, I think are worth still being on that list. I wouldn't take anything off that list.
I agree.
So is so cottage, is that going to be captured under what you are already doing, Dustin?
Yep, cottage is already in there.
The cottage is crossed off. What about revising our PUD ordinance?
I'm not revising that right now. This aside from that, it's basically allowing housing types that were previously only allowed by using the planned unit development process to be allowed in another way. So rather than tackling the PUD and hoping what comes out of that is good is I'm going to deal with is only allowable and not sometimes not allowable by PUD by a discrete standard. It's a it's a standard setup just for that use rather than a process.
Yep. So so it seems like that revising PUD is maybe a lower priority that we could shuffle to the bottom of the list and see if.
I agree. I mean, what I would hope is that by the time we're done, no one will want to do a PUD because why would you do a discretionary product pathway when you can do a permitted pathway?
Yeah.
It it would be the PUD where I've seen it used creatively and before is if someone just has a product that doesn't fit neatly within the conventional code, they're able to say, listen, we this we have an alternative standard and an alternative design, and we think it meets an interesting niche and allows us to build with different parameters. You know, we contemplated this street type and this housing type and this architecture, and it's it's not really the conventional one that you look at in your regular government box. It's something else. And I think that's that's something that becomes really difficult in our environment when we talk about needed housing and clear and objective standards. A lot of times a PUD is the opposite of clear and objective. It's
Right.
discretionary in almost every way, shape, and form. So it's supposed to be reserved, not as it's supposed to be reserved for special instances, not as the mainstay of your kind of palette and, you know, quiver of of land uses.
Well, it's an overflow, you know, it's the relief valve. And instead, it's pretty much what everyone has to do because our code doesn't have enough options in it to allow people to do anything creative. So everyone is using the relief valve.
Yeah.
Or at least they were at a certain time.
So to have it there is a good thing as the relief valve. It's just not the front. Like the and I think that's a that's an important distinction on how it's used elsewhere as compared to how we've found ourselves using it.
So I'll I'll throw one thing out there to maybe go on our list of meetings. And the reason I'll put it out there is because it's kind of critical for everything. And that is examining how we measure building height. Because if you're going to tell us, you know, on this thing, you can use something 12 feet tall, we've already got a standard that we don't really agree upon or understand or maybe think can be improved, given that a lot of the land left is has some topography.
I agree. I have on my list view shed preservation, which goes along with building heights, because I don't understand why we artificially set a building height in an area where it could be higher and the people who live behind that proposed building will not have their view distorted if the building is higher. And other towns with major topography and either ocean views or mountains have a view shed ordinance. So I don't know if that's what Bill was talking about, but that's what I had on my list.
I think that's kind of the opposite, or maybe the other side of it. I'm not sure which side you're talking about, Megan, because in a lot of cases, the view shed ordinances are ways to limit development and restrict height. And I think you're talking about there are cases where for view shed reasons, there's no justification for the the limited height restrictions.
I'm on. I'm for both. If you have a view right now and somebody tears down the house next to you and puts up something that meets the the building height and obstructs your view, I don't understand why that is happening. But on the flip side, if somebody wants to put up a taller building than is permissible, but it doesn't destroy any views, why can't they do that?
So this is definitely an issue that will need some deeper discussion. My personal reaction to what you said is we live in a city. In cities, people people block each other's views. That's reality. And if we if we try to avoid that, we're going to every time, so the city council has repeatedly reduced building heights because of people bitching and moaning about, oh, someone built in front of me, I lost my view. And that's why we can't develop any density in our city because we're constantly afraid of blocking somebody's view. And sorry, it's just you live in a city. Get used to it.
The objective.
That's my view, though.
Read or we have consensus or?
I'd like to talk about it.
Yeah, should we put that as one of our 12 meetings?
Sounds like Megan and I both want to talk about it. We may be on different sides.
I I think that gets rolled into the, you know, on the list of height. You know, that gets rolled into it. I mean, it's the the strategy is to evaluate the methodology of height. I think we can't avoid a view shed philosophy on there.
Right.
And yeah, there there are actually two separate, there's two separate bullets on this housing strategy document. One is determine, you know, revised building heights methodology. And then the other one is determine determine if a building height is appropriate and for multifamily. It's slightly related. I don't know if we wrap those two concepts in the same meeting or or we even want to talk about the other one.
Remember, we got 12 meetings.
And then the other two that go together are lot lot sizes. So it it we could maybe at the tail end of the year, reexamine our development standards by zone, and that's going to be lot size and building height by zone. And it may or may not be as much of a priority if this other stuff comes through. But for me, that's been what I've wished we had done for the past five years. And I just can't let go of that one because I don't know that the problem is going to solve itself with what we have in front of us. Maybe it will.
So yeah, Bill, I yeah, maybe I hopefully I'm not confusing this whole thing, but what I see is there's the fundamental discussion about what housing types we're trying to achieve and how these parameters, which are built into our zone, allow or don't allow achieving those. And I think that there is a constant conflict. And the reason why we don't make any progress on this is not because we're not smart enough to make progress, but because the reality is that we keep on saying we want greater housing density, we want more people to be able to fit within our limited land area. And then we say, and we want everybody to live in a cottage with a fence around it and a driveway and a yard. You know, we keep on defining these. We keep forgetting that we're living in a city and that within a city that you may not have the green space between houses that you want. You may not have the 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 view shed that you want. You might not have the you know, the empty streets so that your kids can play stickball in the streets that you want. In fact, there may be cars parked on the street instead of in the in the garage. But again, we're talking about an urban plan, and I just get so frustrated that every time planning commission or city council gets near an urban plan, they come to the conclusion that they really want everyone living in 1950s suburbia. So I'll get myself boxed.
So how about we I would advocate or make a motion that one of our 12 dates goes to examining our development standards by zone?
I agree. I mean, we have to really call out, you know, I'm going to say call out the hypocrisy of it, but we have we have to call it out and say, is this what we want or not? Yeah, let's stop saying that we want more density if we keep on saying we want bigger setbacks, less lot coverage and lower heights.
Yes, I agree with you. That's why I think we should talk about this.
I agree.
So Dustin, you probably have like six things for your 12 meetings now. Which is about right.
Oh, yeah, right, right. I want to I want to go back to how many times we talked about the recommendations of the park framework in last year. So I'm I'm hoping we we navigate through the through our our list quickly. But I'm what I'm going to do is I'm going to write them down and I will it'll give us the opportunity to focus on a discrete list, allow you to think about it ahead of time, and then and come back with either priorities overlaps and help kind of put this on strata. But I
I have to say that looking at the at the minutes from last year or the year before, whatever sort of minutes we had, it did strike me how many times we heard exactly the same thing from exactly the same person. Cut and replace. And I know Tina's already chided me on this.
Well.
Saying the same thing.
They place this on a I I don't expect this to have a QJR meeting in the first month or the first one. I don't expect anything to be, even if we had an appeal, to be able to get it on there so we can go back to first meeting November and take the opportunity to review the shortlist and and a recommendation for 2021.
So let's put that next November 2nd. Is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry. And I don't think that's the right number, but.
Yeah.
The day before election day. Do we get the first and the and the third or the second or fourth? I always forget.
First and third.
That's correct.
November 2nd. Yeah, November 2nd is the date.
I'm sure there'll be nothing else on our minds the day before election day.
No.
Oh, geez. Hey, Dustin, I have some I have some other items on my list, and I don't think they necessarily require a whole meeting, but
Let's hear them.
One, well, first, before I go, you referenced the cascade work is going to start. One, well, first, before I go, you referenced the Cascade work is going to start soon. What do you mean by that?
Did I say Cascade work would start soon?
I think you did.
The Rand Cascade project that we're talking about?
Oh, Rand, the Rand project.
Oh, okay, okay. Gotcha.
That, that is on, we have a, I believe we're going to end up with a consultant selection for development econ, economics consultant here in the coming weeks.
But it, what is, what is the Rand project? Is that we just stick a stoplight in or is that something else?
No, that's the.
A little more than a stoplight.
Oh, the Rand property. Got it. Okay.
Yep.
Oh.
Sorry, it's, it's the city purchased acreage
Yeah.
on Rand Road for the purposes of developing housing. So getting into the economics of how does that look? How do we go from a local government who doesn't build housing and to bring this onto the market or to bring this to development?
Okay, that helps me with my list. So my first item was Safe Roots to School Planning Network Plan that I know that it's not official official, but ODOT says, ODOT sent an email that it was pretty much official that the city of Hood River was going to be winning one of the Planning Identification Grants. And it would be great for Planning Commission to see what comes from that. And I know it's going to run probably the first half of the 2021. And it's a great, it's a great program. ODOT subsidizes, if I'm saying these words right, I'm, they hire a professional planning consultant that works with the students and the principals to identify what the desire lines are between the schools and the neighborhoods and the after school. And so that'll be really interesting to see what comes from that. So I don't think that's a whole meeting, but it's something that I think Planning Commission would like to see. And then the same, along the same lines, the Heights Urban Renewal Master Plan, I don't understand the relationship between Planning Commission and that project. I'm going to list all these out and then we can come back to ones.
Okay, keep going.
Parking minimums. I know we've talked about looking at a systems-wide parking reformation, inclusionary zoning. When multifamily is developed, are we going to set aside or make it mandatory to set aside some that are affordable? And I'll stop there.
So if I could jump on the parking one, to me, it would be very productive to have a discussion on parking philosophy. Because I think, you know, we spend all this time talking about details of parking code. But what is overriding philosophy of how we manage parking in our residential and our commercial areas? This, this concept of is parking all right? Is, you know, the space in front of my curb on my house all right? All of that stuff, you know, as a city, we're going to have to talk about that. We keep beating about the bush on these things rather than diving in and saying, okay, this is what we believe.
Yeah, that's when I see a whole meeting, if not a series of comments from the community and yeah, it's what Arthur said. We need to have a discussion on that. I would love to have a discussion on that. You're suggesting, Arthur, that that's something that gets codified or we're just sort of coming up with our opinions on it so it helps guide our future decision-making? What?
Yeah, I would say the latter, that, that in my view, if we as a group don't have a high-level philosophical discussion about it and see, I suspect that we're all in very different places, a lot of the elements of it. And maybe with some talking, we can narrow down the, the number of different directions we're headed. But I'd love to understand philosophically where we are all on that before we go in and try to do any code reform. It may be that there's no space for code reform. It might be that we all look and say, you know what? There's a lot of value to be gained by addressing this element of parking that's built into our code.
Okay.
We already identified that parking affects cost, it affects density.
Here, here. Parking. Dustin, is there any space left on that calendar?
I think you got three quarters of a meeting per topic. You don't even get to have a.
Yeah. That's the way we roll.
And Megan, I'm sorry, I grabbed one thing out of your list, but remind me of the other things on your list that I skipped.
Safe Roots to School presentation, whenever that finishes up, same with the.
Hold that. Yeah. So the Safe Roots to School, isn't that part of the TSP discussion? Isn't that the, the PED framework, PED bike framework of the TSP?
Well, it's going to happen after. It's going to happen after we do the TSP.
Yeah. So the safe, the Safe Roots scope was not included in this first scope that came out of, I mean, there's there's probably some crosswalk, not, not to use that term too convenient. There's, there's probably some crossover between the TSP work and the, the routes and the the cross-sections and some of the analysis of the West Side that's going in and that will end up being a part of the Safe Roots Plan, but they're not one in the same.
Okay. And then you brought up the urban renewal, Heights Urban Renewal. With that, it sounds like you were more of a question as to what our interaction is with that.
Yeah, when the plan is done by the consultant, what happens with that plan in relation to Planning Commission? What happened with the State Street Urban Renewal Plan when that was done? Did Planning Commission see that and comment on it or?
Tina, Tina is your liaison to the URAK. There's a, there was a position that's set within the, the Urban Renewal Agency where Planning Commission crosses over and that is, she is your rep.
Yeah.
So, but I think Megan said. I'm sorry, Tina.
No, I was going to say, yeah, there's, there's been a whole lot of nothing going on on that. It's, it's definitely, that's been a ongoing frustration with how slow that's moving, but, but I, I, I'm curious and the answer to Megan's question is like, yeah, how did it work with the State Street? Because that was before I was involved.
Yeah. So I, I was there through that process. And, and so State Street, State Street was a little bit different because State Street, we quickly got, so State Street was done in, it was part of the downtown plant and it followed on. There were two very similar projects doing the lower part of Oak and then the upper part of Oak. And these were all situations where we brought in a contractor who, who drew up design and plans and and then it was more of a construction execution project. It wasn't as, as much of a philosophical planning process. It was pretty clear what had to be done. I mean, State Street may have more, a little more design elements to it that an Oak Street had, but in most cases, like, okay, well, we need a new sidewalk. Oh, here's what the sidewalk designer says the sidewalk looks like. But I think in this case, I think Megan is right that we're talking much more of an actual philosophy discussion that is going to, to happen as the design team brings forward concepts.
Yeah.
There's a, the Heights needs a philosophy. The downtown had a philosophy, right?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I will certainly keep the group apprised of what's going on. And the minute we start getting near any kind of planning process, we're not there yet. There's going to be obviously a lot of community. Pardon?
Every month I get a notice that the meeting's been canceled. So I suspect you haven't been meeting very much.
Yeah.
But yeah, so, so given all that, though, the whole urban renewal process, it is a little confusing because we're talking about an urban planning job, but it seems like you're assigning, it seems like the philosophy, the, the decisions get assigned to the Urban Renewal Board and not to the Planning Commission to discuss and debate the urban design elements.
Yeah. And even stranger than that, it goes to the advisory committee first. So at least, I mean, because we have a liaison on the, on the planning commission, I mean, we, we're aware, we definitely will know what's going on. But yeah, the order does seem rather backwards in a way.
So when we did State Street, we didn't have an advisory committee. I, I created the advisory committee. That was kind of my proposal. And, and just to give you the, the really narrow history, we previously had an advise, had the Urban Renewal Board was a bunch of retired city councilors who no one even knew. And, and I'd never met any of them. And they were going off and making these decisions and basically providing a flush fund for the city managers to do lots of different stuff. And, and so all these things were happening, but the city council had no tie into that. We acknowledged that in every other urban renewal agency in the state, the city council members made up the agency and made the decisions. So we decided to go to that model. And in doing so, we had a lot of people who said, hey, but you know, we were really interested in how do we get our input? So I said, okay, let's create an advisory committee. So we created this advisory committee. But it was supposed to be an advisory committee on the specifics of how these individual construction projects are implemented as opposed to be advising on the urban design elements. And so I think that this overlap has gotten confused and, you know, we've never had to straighten this out because we've never done an urban renewal project at a time when we had both a, a planning commission and an urban renewal advisory committee. But is the advisory committee making the, the, the urban design decisions or is the planning commission recommending to the Urban Renewal Agency, which is the city council members plus two port members, that, hey, this is, this is compatible with your urban design philosophy? I hate to see this urban renewal advisory committee become, you know, take over that part of a planning commission's duty. You know, the responsibility for the general urban design concept of the city. Right? That's planning. I mean, that fits in planning commission. And I think that people are confused because of the fact that we even have this committee. And they're kind of deferring to it. I think that's a mistake.
Well, I agree. I mean, it come up in the Heights where, you know, people are saying, well, we don't like the idea of having bike lanes. It's like, well, it's in our TSP. I mean, it's there. It's this isn't a decision we should even be talking about in this group. But like you said, part of it may just be public education, explaining to people where the decisions, how the decisions are actually made.
But you, you, you make advisory committee and they're going to assume that they get to, they get to make certain sets of decisions. That's my fault. I, I should have thought about this problem. I didn't, I mean, this, this never came up in any of our discussions. Honestly, we just, we didn't talk about, you know, where does urban design happen? And I, I think, I would say Dustin, I think maybe that has to be a, a decision. We need to go to the, the city council and say, hey, we got a little bit of conflict here. We have, you know, this goes to, I'm probably looping back around to Megan's point. We have a conflict here where we have a, a, a planning commission, which is responsible for urban design. And then we have an urban renewal advisory committee, which is advising on elements which might be relate to urban design. How do we, how do we deal with this apparent conflict?
Yeah, I got it. I got it written down there. Just the establishment of roles. To me, based of observation and operation, regardless of how it was scripted or penned, the URAK seems to serve the Urban Renewal Agency in a similar way as Planning Commission serves City Council. That is by, whether by design or by custom, that, that is.
Definitely not.
What's apparent. Right. But I mean, that's what, that's what is apparent based on how things are operating, not, but not necessarily by design or intent. So.
Yeah, I think that was a mistake. And, you know, seeing that now, it's like, I wish I had thought about the problem back 10 years ago. You, you certainly understand how you get there, but it's not, it, it, the people who are chosen for Urban Renewal Advisory Committee are chosen because they represent the neighborhood constituencies. They're customers. They're not designers. They're at the wrong end of the problem. You're not getting experts in design. You're getting, people are saying, hey, I have a business up there. This is what I'd like.
Yeah.
Who, who's that? Who just said, yeah?
I said, yeah. I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah. Anyway, so great, great for bringing that up, Megan. Thank you. That was a, I think that needed to be said.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying the, the issue because that was what I was, my head was trying to wrap itself around.
Yeah, I wish I had thought this much about it 10 years ago.
So I got a list to work from and I also, a request for minutes on this. If we could wrap up and I'll be back.
So we're on the agenda. You're saying you want to move forward to item number four?
Please.
Okay, item number four. We have draft minutes for January 22nd, 2019, February 19th, March 18th, April 1st, April 15th, May 20th, June 3rd and June 17th, all of 2019. I had a chance to review them quickly. Enough people review them to, for us to approve them. Just as a matter of, as a matter of procedure, you do not have to have been present at the meeting to approve it. In fact, given that we're approving minutes from two years ago, it's not surprising that many of you will not have been present.
Yeah. Can I just make a comment on that? Is this a legal requirement that the commission approves these?
Yes.
And what is the intent of that requirement?
So I, I, Dustin, do you want to explain this or can I?
You, you seem to be ready to go. You have some.
Okay. Yeah. So ORS 192 defines what minutes are supposed to contain and that every agency needs to approve minutes. Minutes are drafted until they're approved. Once they're approved, then they can put up on the website, made available to the public. When they're still drafted, they're not available to the public. There are required to be minutes of every meeting. It's how, the minutes are only required to have a very minimal amount of information. They need to say who was present, what issues were discussed, what motions were made, who made the motions and who seconded the motion and what the vote was on the motion. So that's actually a very limited set of things. We do minutes that are far more, you know, complete in terms of learning about what actually happened during the meeting. But I do worry that we get, wind up getting so far behind in these that they're not serving the legal purpose, which is supposed to be that people in the public are supposed to be able to know what actions were taken by the body.
Well, that's exactly, yeah. And that's obviously where I'm going with this. That's exactly my point. I feel like maybe we're meeting the letter of the law. We are not at all meeting the spirit of law. And I just, and honestly, I think it puts the commissioners in a really untenable, difficult position to ask us to say, yes, I will vote and say that these are accurate minutes when they're from 18 months ago. I mean, I, it's just, it's, it's kind of a crazy. It seems like just a ridiculous exercise to me. So I think if it's a legal requirement, then we have to do it. But I mean, going forward, I just, I see no reason why we do not have the minutes from the last meeting at the next meeting. It's just, it's policy. It's every committee I've ever served on. We, it works that way and we need to do that. We need to make that a priority because this is, this is kind of absurd to be looking at something from January.
What I would add to what you said, Tina, is that, again, I would go back to ORS 192 and I think it's 192, which, which says what the minutes have to contain. And, and we should be able to generate minutes containing those required aspects very quickly. Even for meetings that happened a long time ago, because they're simply statements of fact. They don't have to, we don't have to transcribe the whole discussion of, you know, someone said this and then, then, you know, this commissioner said that. All of that detail is not required to be in the minute. I mean, it's great that we're putting it in, but only if it's timely. Given that it's not timely.
I think it is, I think it is valuable and, and even transcribing a three-hour meeting you can do in, you know, a few hours. And if, again, it kind of goes back to our other discussion. If, if there's no one there to do this and it's a legal requirement by the state, then we need to figure out a way to get it done in a timely manner. Because this, this is clearly a broken system.
So could we add that to our list, our, our work plan list, Dustin?
I can shorten the minutes. I can shorten the minutes to make the statutory minimum and make them quick. And we would have eight meetings and eight pages. I mean, that's. I mean, that's, that, I can.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to cast blame on somebody, I'm just saying, it's like, I think if, you know, I think it is valuable for the public. And I think in the, you know, efforts to be transparent, it's frustrating for the public to say, oh, what happened at the last meeting? And then, oh, well, here's the meetings from December of 2018, but, you know, nothing more recent. So I, you know, again, we need to figure out a way, I mean, is it that expensive to bring in somebody who can type minutes during our meetings? I mean, it seems like that would be an outside service, perhaps we could, we could get into our budget.
So Tina, you would like to see this level of detail in the minutes, but you'd like us to catch up? I stated that I would be okay with us catching up by not having that level of detail. What do other people feel?
I, I think it has to be somewhere in between those two. When I was reading this detail, it was, it's a lot of pages, it's probably more than we need. But I would not want to reduce it down to just the motion and who made it and.
Yeah.
But can it be deadline-driven? I mean, I think her point of trying to have the meetings reviewed at the next meeting makes a ton of sense. And, you know, where's that sweet spot?
I mean, I guess I would also ask this, like, could, could we at least be always getting the last meeting's minutes at the current meeting and then be using time as available to catch up? So that we're not getting, making it any worse, we just have this gap of, I mean, they don't have to be sequential.
Yeah.
We have a gap that we're trying to catch up on. Anyway, a bunch of ideas thrown out there.
We'll work on, I think one thing that we have to our favor is technology has changed a little bit, that we have the audio of the meetings. You know, the audio is now available, it's actually more accessible. So shrinking the minutes and from a transcription, being less is a supplement by the audio. So as, I think that's as valuable as anything. And now that's all available online. So we have now, if you really care about the meetings of 2020, you can go online and listen to what, what is played out. And we have, we've been able to post that and keep that going because we don't have a planning secretary. So transcribing the minutes is left up to each of us, and we have to do that. Whereas we have the opportunity to automatically post minutes or post audio right away, once it downloads and compresses. But that's, that's why you see the audio up on the website much faster than the minutes themselves.
Yeah, that's a good point.
The minutes provide an index into that. I was just saying, the minutes provide an index into that audio. These are the issues that were discussed. So the, you know, you don't want to listen to, to three hours of audio to determine that you didn't even talk about the issue that you're interested in.
Yeah.
So I guess, yeah, if I'm still suggesting that could be simpler minutes supplemented by audio, I agree with Dustin.
Yeah, that sounds, I could buy that, right? If there's some simpler minutes that talked about the key issues and sequence of events, it would help people with the audio.
Yeah, we could have very simple minutes with timestamps of when we change topics or.
So there were a few timestamps in, in the ones we got.
Okay.
One or two, yeah.
That way somebody could go back to the audio and, I mean, because I'm actually interested in like going back and reviewing audio from a couple of meetings where if I know the exact time, it's kind of like, here's this YouTube video, fast forward to 2:50 and you'll, yeah. That's kind of, I want the Cliff Notes of our, of our minutes.
I guess I was nowhere, Dustin, that you no longer have any assistance. So this is come and gone. The way we got in all this trouble was we went for a period of like 18 months or 24 months without any assistance. So no minutes got prepared during that time at all. And then we wound up being several years behind, and we've never caught up. So you're telling me that, again, we have no administrative assistance in planning?
You have three of them, and their names, Dustin, Jennifer, and Kevin.
Yeah, I mean, that's, again, it's part of work plan, and I think this does have to be on our work plan. And we have to talk about the fact that our work plan doesn't allow for generation of minutes on a timely manner. Or, you know, our current staffing doesn't allow for that, that to happen. I want that to be in the, I want that to be a issue that City Council talks about, a budgetary issue.
Yeah, and I also agree with the idea of let's, let's start on the process of doing it last week. And then we'll, we'll deal with approving the ancient ones as we have time.
Well, we should be in, we should be into 2020, so we're, we're in this year's.
For bad news, we're almost out of 2020.
So I think when, when I picked this up, we got to do minutes from 20, I think we did the four-year update, which was kind of maddening. So I definitely want to avoid that trap of having to go back and having people that weren't, you know, looking to the one person who was here and accountable at that. I think it was Bill was the only person who actually was still here for some of those meetings.
Right.
Trying to.
I didn't even know the names of a lot of the people who were on the thing. Yeah, I, I like to see us at least help the city council understand from a budgetary point of view where planning is. If they decide that they want to spend their money on planning a police station, they can go and do that. But they don't, I think, appreciate the fact that we're not making any progress on the number one thing on their plan. And they're pushing ahead on, you know, parking, parking garage discussions and, and police station discussions, all these things which aren't in the same place on their priority, but they don't realize that they're not making progress on their priority items. So I want to communicate that. And they can then decide that really it's not the priority, but they can't, can't just play this game, you know, forever and not actually address any of the issues that are a priority. Okay, so we have a minute, we have minutes, and I think what we were looking for was a motion.
I think we already had discussion.
Yeah, we've had discussion about them already.
Yeah, so Tina, I didn't even get a motion. So for the minutes, we need to have a motion and a second. So I have a motion and a second to approve the, the set of minutes which have been provided today.
I move that we accept the minutes that have been provided today.
Okay.
And I'll have a second.
So two motions, Mark seconds, to approve the minutes that have been provided for us. Any discussion? I'll point out that there were some, some, I think our editorial, I think in preparing the minutes, you put notes to yourself, and there was at least two or three spots where there were notes to yourself, which I don't think were intended to be passed along. So I, I would ask that, I would suggest that when we approve this, we do it with the request to remove editorial notes. So any further discussion? So, did you all nod and say that you agree with removing editorial notes?
Yes.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So those in favor of approving the minutes as presented with editorial notes removed, please raise your finger to indicate yes.
Erica says yes.
I was just gonna say, Erica, I constantly look at your picture and I think, boy, she's just not moving. And it's a very lifelike rendition there. I think Bill is putting his kids to sleep, so are you still there, Bill? So you voted yes, too?
Yes.
So we are unanimous, minutes have been approved. Next item on our agenda is adjournment. Does anyone object to adjournment?
No.
No.
Then we are adjourned. So wait, before we adjourn, we do have a meeting, did we agree that we're scheduling a meeting on November 2nd? Dustin, you're gonna come back to it, you're muted, you're, you're coming back to us with some more detail?
Yes, so you'll have your, your script list and any updates that Cheryl on TSP went, went back. I hope to have at least the first section through task two, five, back to you. So give you a little preview.
And could I request that we add another item to the agenda? Which is that you guys need to figure out how you're going to run your meetings without me? I think you're quite capable of it. But you should take some action to, to, for now, appoint a assistant chair to be promoted to chair before the end of the year.
Okay.
We'll, we'll work, we'll.
Don't nominate, though.
Erica, I didn't even see your lips moving. You're excellent at that, I mean, you could be drinking and juggling at the same time. Great, so with that, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody, catch you later.
Thank you all.
Thank you, bye.